Hello, welcome to another municipal focus. This is the series of shows. Our gear towards the candidates who are running for office 2020. This particular series of programs focuses on individuals who are running for school committee in the town of Whitman. Currently, I believe that there are four individuals who are on the ballot seeking office. There are two incumbents, there are two challengers. And joining us today is David Forth. David, welcome to Municipal Focus.
Kevin, thank you for having me today. I appreciate you providing me with a platform where I can speak and advocate for my views and platform.
Yeah, and knowing that we are currently enduring COVID-19, a conversation like this is more essential because the traditional ways of going out and meeting people and congregating is kind of forbidden. We're kind of doing this thing called social distancing. And until we're able to know that we're past any point of infecting anybody else and hopefully past the second surge if we are to see it. This is the new normal for the time being. For those who don't know who you are, who might be new to town government, take a moment, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure, I want to talk about my last year of school at Whitman-Hansen. Last year I was a senior. And basically what happened is we had pink slips go out throughout the district. We had over 40 pink slips go out. Basically, at the high school, we had a lot of students who were upset. There was teachers who were crying because they thought they were going to lose their jobs. The environment was really depressing, to be truthful about it. And basically, what I decided to do is I reached out to the superintendent. I also sent out a district email asking for teachers to give me feedback on what they need, what their views are, and how we can help them and how we can advocate for things that they can't necessarily speak about because not all teachers live in Whitman and Hanson. So at town meeting, when it's time to speak about, you know, budget or, you know, things that are relevant to them and to their livelihood, they don't get recognized on the floor. So I decided to take it upon me to help advocate for them and hopefully, you know, keep jobs. That was the goal, to keep jobs and help us get more funding towards education because as as it is right now, we are frankly not getting enough funding.
Okay, so besides the financial side of things, what are the other reasons why you're running for school committee?
So there's a couple of things that really concern me about our district. One is we don't have full day kindergarten. And it's really baffling to me because almost every district in the entire state has full day kindergarten. We have, we do a full day, but it's not for free. We pay about three grand a year in tuition. So a kindergartner can, you know, have class from, you know, eight o'clock to three o'clock or whatever it is. And there's law statistics that prove children who have half day kindergarten compared to full day kindergarten are very behind going into first grade in terms of reading, comprehension, retaining skills, just basic understandings and just educational, the foundation you need for your education. So basically, I want to advocate for that. And I want to advocate for a lot of other things. Why I want to advocate for Chromebooks because one thing we are lacking is there's 300 Chromebooks to 1,100 students at the high school. And I think now more than ever, we're starting to realize how important technology is, especially amid this pandemic that we have going on. So I want to make sure we have proper funding for that. I also want to make sure that we can reduce transportation costs as well. There's a lot of issues regarding non-mandated busing. So my goal would be to help reduce those costs so we can use them towards other things. I want to invest more in our special ed programs because as it is right now, we have students who live in Whitman and Hanson who necessarily can't get the education they need in our schools. So they have to go to another district to get this and we actually pay for that. It's our, we're paying for the transportation, we're paying for their education. So my idea is that we invest more into our special ed. So these kids who are going out of district to get this education stay in district. And what this will do is, one, allow our students to have a better education. Two, it will reduce costs for transportation overall. And three, we will have a higher enrollment. And the higher enrollment is important for what we're doing because in order to get more funding, to get more state aid, we have to increase our enrollment. And as it is right now, our enrollment has not increased since 2015. And because our enrollment hasn't increased, neither has our state aid. So actually, the state is giving us more aid than we're supposed to have right now. And the reason they do this is because the state has a promise saying they're not going to give us less state aid than the year before. It's called hold harmless. So basically, our enrollment hasn't gone up since 2015. So neither has our state aid. So my goal is to increase enrollment to get it to pass the 2015 point so we can continue to get more state aid funding. Because as it is right now, I believe the state, and don't quote me on this, but believe it's 49% of the overall school budget the state is funding, while it is Whitman and Hanson funding the other 51%. And in most areas, it's actually the state who, the schools usually fund, or the towns usually fund 60% of the school and the state's supposed to fund around like 40%. So it's really concerning in those numbers. I have a couple of other things right here. Another thing I want to advocate for that not a lot of people are talking about, it's called the Bright Program. The Bright Program is for students' mental health. It's for students who have truancy issues. And basically, what this program does, it's still social workers at the middle school and which will allow them to, you know, basically say there's a student who has a mental health issue. It causes them to miss 20 days of school or whatever it may be. These social workers help them adjust back into, you know, back into school and in their work and basically get everything they need, get their materials together. So they're not behind, they're not worried about being held back. They're not worried about, you know, ways to cope with whatever trauma they're dealing with and things like that. So that's a couple of things that I'm trying to advocate for. Another thing I forgot to mention too is I went to a school, Old Rochester Regional, for two years when I was in high school. And there they had a Chromebook tech team. And this tech team was student-led. So students were taking their free block to go work in the library to maintenance Chromebooks. And it was teaching them, you know, the hardware, Chromebooks, the software to it. And I found this program very beneficial to students because, one, you're learning technology. And I think technology is essential more than ever in society. And I also believe that by having this tech team, you're actually saving costs for Chromebooks because you don't have to worry about someone else repairing them. Students themselves are repairing them and they're learning something valuable.
Well, it's a good media answer for just the second question, David. Very nice. I'm going to kind of delve right into the school budget and the town assessment funding. The method that is being used, there's been a lot of discussion this particular going into fiscal year 2021, where there's been a change in the method instead of, because knowing that there's more students that are coming from Whitman than Hanson, that's how it was kind of split up. That's why Whitman has paid more so than in past years. But now with this new method, it's more of a wealth-based type of a thing. So if anything, there's a little bit of a change in how it's being calculated. What is your understanding? This is a major issue. What is your understanding of the situation?
So basically, in 1991 is when we signed the regional agreement and we created our current method of assessing the schools and assessing the towns. And 93 is when we had the Education Reform Act. And I believe it was then they instilled the statutory method. And then it was '07 where they added the aggregate part to that statutory method. So basically, what I have to say about that is this, this method has been around. This is nothing new. It's called the statutory method, it's the legal method. It's what most schools are using in the state. The part that bothers me is that we had two town administrators and we had a school committee who had no clue for all these years. So what was happening is we should have been having a vote every year for, to use an alternative method. Because if you don't vote to use an alternative method, then the default is the statutory method. So all this, all these years, we've been using a different method than what we're supposed to be using, even if the 91 regional agreement said otherwise. Because at that point, what was said in that agreement was outdated and needed to be amended to include the statutory method, which it didn't. And I believe they're working at that now. So basically, what I have to say is I'm deeply concerned that we had a whole entire school committee in two towns that had no clue about how they were funding their schools. To my knowledge, south of shore, Botech was using the statutory method to fund their schools. So I just don't understand how the town administrators saw one method for one school and saw another method for another school and never questioned, you know, what the other method meant. So as it stands, I just don't understand why we didn't use the statutory method. And now Hanson taxpayers are, you know, reasonably upset because they feel as if they're put in a position where they're going to have to pay significantly more because they believe it's Hanson, it's Whitman trying to instill it upon them. But really, it's the neglect of their own town and of the school committee that failed to follow through basic procedure and essentially hurt the taxpayers. Because we took care of this when, you know, this was supposed to be instilled. Nobody would have even noticed, nobody would have had any clue. This wouldn't even be a discussion right now, but we didn't. And we ignored the law. And I don't know if someone knew about it, knew that we were using the wrong method this entire time. But it's really disappointing that you have all these people who missed out on this very important aspect. And now we're talking about in 2020, when we should have been talking about this many years ago now. That's how I feel.
Okay, there are whispers about possibly deregionalizing. And I don't want to say whether it's more of a whisper coming from Whitman or Hanson. What's your thoughts on that?
So my thoughts on that is how I look at Hanson's perspective is they're trying to save money, but they're also trying to have a quality education too. By deregionalizing, Hanson's not going to have a quality education or any money. I mean, the reason why we have so much state aid right now is because we're a region. We cut off that region. So what's going to happen next? We're going to have to have, figure out a high school. Each town's going to have their own high school. Each town's going to need their own superintendent, assistant superintendent. That's going to cost money. We're going to have to have our own regional agreement. And like I said before, we're going to have to have less state aid because we're not going to be a region. So I just don't see where, where anyone benefits from that. I think the best way for us to benefit is to remain as a region and to work on our partnership. I agree, the statutory method is very contentious right now. But that isn't, you know, Whitman going after Hanson or Hanson going after Whitman. I mean, it was something that should have been there, something that the state's had for a while. So I just don't see where deregionalizing benefits anyone. I can see, you know, why people feel that way, because why there's that anger and resentment. But I just don't see where it economically benefits a single individual, Whitman or Hanson.
You had mentioned earlier about the Ed Reform Act of 1993. And a lot of folks feel that the governors, the recent work during fiscal 19, fiscal 2020, to create the Student Opportunity Act, which was kind of a revamp of, of the Ed Reform in 93. What's your understanding of this and the benefits that the school district, if it remains intact, could receive once we get past the issues with COVID-19?
By, are you asking what the Student Opportunities Act would benefit, how that would benefit the region?
Yeah, what's your, what's your understanding of it, the benefits? And any, any thoughts that if there, if there are any, if there are any additional funds coming to the community, how you would like to see that impacted?
So basically, the Student Opportunity Act, I do know a little bit. I'm not familiar with it as I am with the 93. But I do understand that what it would allow for the region is to have more funding. I'm not sure exactly what that would be. To be honest with you, I need to look more into that myself. I heard that it really was more oriented towards cities and benefited them more. But how it exactly benefits our region is something that I do need to look more into.
Okay, what do you feel is some of the issues in this race? Some of the things that need to be addressed once the election is all said and done?
So, you know, we've been talking about the budget a lot. But I think we should really be talking about pragmatic policy. And basically, what I want to instill is a new policy. Is I want us to be very policy-oriented. So what my main goal is, like I've said before, we need full day kindergarten for all kindergarteners. It's essential. I mean, our whole entire thing is we need to increase enrollment. And people go, well, why doesn't anyone want to move into Whitman and Hanson? Well, it's simple. If you're a family, say you're, you know, you're newly wed, you're about to have a child or you're about to send your child off to school, where would you rather go? Would you rather bring your child somewhere where they can have full day kindergarten for free? Where you can go send them there and then you can go to work and not have to worry about anything else? Or would you go somewhere where they could have half day kindergarten? Or you could pay three grand to get something you could get for free? But if you don't spend that amount of money, now you have to worry about transportation for your child and make sure someone's home for that child. And at the, on top of it, they're not getting a good education. They're not, if you're in the classroom for two or three hours, what are you learning? I get there in kindergarten, but at that point, that's when you're instilling the foundation of their learning. So look at it this way, imagine being a special ed, a special needs kid and you're half day kindergarten and now this pandemic hits. What did they learn this year? What did they gain? They're going to go in the first grade and know what? Nothing. And at least if they had full day kindergarten this year, they probably would have learned, you know, significantly more, probably as much as they would have learned if they had half day this entire year. So my, what I want to instill when I get elected is I want to make sure our money's being used towards our students because it's not. It's not benefiting anyone. Per pupil, for example, I'm pretty sure we're $3,000 under the state average of expenditures per pupil, which is really concerning.
So I would, I would ask you, earlier on in that conversation, you had mentioned about the need for more Chromebooks, for more technology.
Right.
I would, I believe that just a few short years ago, that there was an override that was, that was voted on and approved by both communities to, to upgrade the technology and go with a more virtual-based computer system where you might have had a hub, but then the rest of them would just be, all the rest of the computers would be using, you know, they would be linked into that hub, per se. Are you saying that right now what's being, what's being used is not sufficient?
That is what I'm saying. So basically, at the elementary level, we do have one-to-one ratios for Chromebooks to students. So we have plenty of Chromebooks at the elementary level from what I'm being told. At the middle school level, it's more of like one to two. So for, you know, every two students, we have about one Chromebook for them. And then at the high school level is where we're really struggling right now is we have 300 Chromebooks for 1,100 students. And basically, how I view it is in high school, you probably need the Chromebook more than any other time, you know, in your high school or in your school career. Because we use everything for the Chromebooks. I mean, we're trying to move from, you know, books to paperless. So constantly, we're going to need to do research, to do projects and anything like that. And if we don't have them, then we're kind of left like sitting ducks essentially. I mean, we're going to have to depend on providing our own technology or going home and using, you know, what we have there. So I do believe Chromebooks are a significant issue. And I believe one of the ways we can help reduce costs is by having a student-led tech team.
Okay, let's see where you're, let's see where your head is at when it comes to the voters. While it has been virtually impossible for candidates to get out and meet face-to-face with residents, I'm sure that you're very apt at using social media. What are you hearing from folks when you're in, you know, one of the town groups or you're speaking with folks about your candidacy to school committee? What are their concerns?
You know, I hear a lot of misinformation going on, on these group pages. For example, I hear a lot of people say that we're overfunding our schools and that, you know, too much of our tax money is going to these, these programs that we're trying to fund. And what I have to say to that is how, I was looking at the state audit that was done a couple of years ago on regional schools. And basically, the foundational budget that is used, they assess that what the state says the school should use to, you know, the method they should use to fund it is actually underestimating the total cost of education. So that being said, the state is already saying that we're underestimating the cost of education using the budget method that we're using now. So we're not, we're already not funding our schools as it is, if that makes sense. I'm trying to, so we're already spending 12 grand, you know, around 12,500 per pupil. It's about $15,000 on average for the state. So we're already underfunding our students as it is using, you know, just the method that the state wants us to do. And we're not even funding that current, you know, method. Then how fun, how much funded are our schools? What I'm trying to say, does that make sense at all?
It does, it does to me.
Okay, okay. I know I was kind of wording poorly, but.
Okay, but again, it doesn't, it doesn't matter what I think. Again, it's, it's the folks who are watching. And, and the idea is how you're connecting with them with these different things that we are, we are discussing. Let's say you are elected later in June. What are some of the things that you would seek to accomplish as a member of the school committee?
I want to lay out student-oriented policy. I want to make sure students' mental health issues are addressed. I want to make sure that they're getting the education they need. When I reached out last year as a senior to teachers, they told me that English curriculum was severely underfunded. They showed me books from the 90s that they were still using. So I want to move away from books that are older than me and move to more paperless, you know, technological aspects. I want us to be, be almost a pioneer, a trailblazer. I want us to lead the way. I don't want us to have to look to other local districts on how we should fund our schools and how we should use our money. Schools should look towards us on what we should be doing. So I want to make sure that when, instead of special ed students going or parents going, well, we can't send our kid here because they're not getting the education they need. I want them to think that Whitman and Hanson is the best place to send their kid. I want people to not have to send their kids to other towns because they can't get what they need in this current town. I want other towns to have to come to us because we have the best education. My goal is to lay out student-oriented policy and increase enrollment.
So what I would ask you, and this is kind of a new question that I've begun asking this year. And it is strictly based because with COVID-19, we are, we are restricted as to how we can gather and how we can be together. A lot of folks like the arena of debate. They like being in the same room to be able to articulate the questions in debate, be able to sit across from the opposition or their, their opponents. Would you volunteer in a candidate's forum if it was not something that was, that was in a room with other candidates? Would you do it virtually?
I would certainly consider it. If it was my preference, I would like to be in the same room. But obviously, our safety comes first and social distancing guidelines are, you know, essential and we should follow through with them. But if the offer was there to have a candidate forum virtually, I believe I would accept it, yes.
Have you followed probably one of my last couple of questions before we wrap up here? This has been a very good conversation. How do you feel the school district has handled having to do things remotely when it comes to continuing to provide education while not sitting in a traditional brick and mortar setting?
So it's conflicting. I watch a lot of what the school committee does on YouTube or I watch it live on the website. I do think they do a good job. I mean, I can understand the gist of what they're saying, but I think some of the issues just kind of lie in basic technology, you know, just the static, not being able to understand what they're saying sometimes. Just basic communication, just issues with their mics, them being muted. I think the biggest issue with these, these electronic, you know, Zoom calls is we don't get to hear the people, the taxpayers, the students, you know, people who it directly affects. I know they do provide the opportunity to, you know, send out an email to like Michelle Lindberg and then she'll read the questions during, you know, the Zoom. But I think it would be, you know, much better. Or I think they should come up with a better way of letting people have their voice heard. But hopefully, we can go back to, you know, in people conversations soon enough.
So aside from, from the elected officials and talking about policy and what goes on, you know, during the school committee meetings, as far as the school, the educational component to, that you would oversee as a governing board, have you followed as to how the school district has been able to still provide an education to Whitman and Hanson students remotely?
I have been following Jeff Simonak's reports on what they've been doing regarding remote, remote learning. I've heard a little bit, I've heard that basically, teachers will, like, for example, at the middle school level, I heard they had some learning assignments from things they've already done previously. Basically, they're trying to focus on subject mastery compared to learning new material. So what I've heard is that teachers are sending out, you know, worksheets or things for students to do. And then they kind of report back and check in with, you know, their students and teachers and whatnot to make sure those are being done. And if they're not being done, I'm pretty sure that, you know, the administration is reaching out to DCF or whoever they need to, to make sure everything's okay at home.
Okay, as we wrap up this, this segment of Municipal Focus, is there any other item that we did not talk about or discuss? Would you like to take a couple of moments to talk about?
Um, I don't know about a particular item. I just want to maybe elaborate more on some things that I did as a senior and to let them know what, what it would be like to have David Forth as a school committee member. So basically, again, like I said previously, as a senior, I reached out to teachers, I reached out to students. I went to every single school, asking them, you know, how can I help? What do they need? And basically, everything, what I can, what I can do to just reach out and talk to them and reach out on the floor and let people know that we're not getting what we need. Teachers told me that curriculum was lacking. They told me that students had to sell mattresses so they could go on band, band concerts. Basically, they were saying that in order for them to get the funding they need to go out to do things that other, you know, districts were able to do at, you know, minimum to no cost, students actually had to sell mattresses. And I just find that, I find that unsettling. Like, why should students have to go out and try to become, you know, picture best sales so they can go do things that they want to do? Another thing that was concerning to me is that it wasn't teachers that were getting pink slips because of incompetence or because of things that they were struggling to do. It had to do because they were, one, they were new teachers, you know, it was within their first three years. So they weren't given professional status. Two, the money wasn't even there. So they just, it was out of their control. But three, what bothers me the most is, once again, what I'm saying about the school committee being unaware is Proposition Two and a Half limits how much per year we can raise property taxes. It limits it to two and a half percent. Well, we weren't accessing the full amount in our levy. I don't know the exact number, but it wasn't the full 2.5. So we were projected to lose over 40 staff members. And it wasn't until Dawn Byers came in, who was our current school committee member. She looked at that and said, what, that's not right. Why aren't we using the full 2.5 if we need it? So thanks to Dawn Byers, we were actually able to save. You know, we were going to lose 40 positions, we ended up losing 19, which is still a lot and way too many. But where was the school committee at the time? She wasn't a school committee member. Where was our school committee members standing up for our students, for our teachers, for our faculty? They weren't there and they need someone who's going to do that and I will be that person.
Anything you want to say in closing, whether it's help folks find out more about you or contact you?
Sure, if anyone wants to email me, you can reach out at fourth, F-O-R-T-H, davidfor@gmail.com. I also have a Facebook page called Fourth for School Committee. We haven't been too active recently, but you'll notice within the next couple of days, we're going to be quite prevalent everywhere.
Excellent. David, thank you very much for taking time to chat with, chat with me here and discuss your campaign for school committee.
Kevin, thank you so much for the opportunity.
You got it. And thank you at home for tuning into programs like this. With COVID-19, a program like this is, is very important for you to get to know candidates like David and others who are in this race or other town races like selectmen. So please stay tuned for more programs. And if there's anything that you'd like to see on WHCA or whether it's Municipal Focus or Crosstalk, info@whca.tv and in the subject line, just know which show and your suggestion in the body of the email. Until next time, have a good day.